Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 7th, 2021 work session of the York County School Board. With the last day of school approaching in just a little over a week, everyone is busy finishing up tasks, planning celebrations, and looking forward to summer break. This has truly been a year filled with unusual hurdles as we've navigated through various new ways of communicating and staying connected. We frequently have heard words like flexibility, unprecedented, unknown, virtual, patience, and grace. And while we all agree it has been an extremely challenging journey, many relationships have grown stronger, countless lessons have been learned, and we've all developed greater problem-solving skills. All in all, we shared a year to remember. Now, we are continuing with the YCSD mask policy, where we'll be wearing masks when we are not speaking. Speakers can remove the masks so that listeners can hear us without us being muffled. We're going to start off with a strategic plan update regarding career awareness. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. Good evening, board members. We're going to bring up to the podium Dr. Karen Cagle, our Associate Director of Educational Technology and Innovation. She's going to provide an update on four objectives under Goal Two of the FY 18 through 22 Strategic Plan related to career awareness, exploration, and preparation. Dr. Cagle.
Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Our current strategic plan includes several objectives related to preparing our students to be career-ready. Tonight, I'm excited to share some of the highlights from this year around Career Connections. Four of our strategic plan objectives are tied to our Career Connections program. There's career awareness and exploration for all of our students. We have the Measure of Workplace Readiness Skills for our secondary students. And then there are work-based learning experiences prior to a student graduating from high school. Another objective are the number of clubs at the elementary and middle school levels that focus on high-demand career fields such as robotics and engineering and those types of things. At the elementary level, our students were introduced to a variety of careers this year through both virtual and in-person events such as career cafes, quests, question-and-answer sessions, and those types of things. These experiences provided a foundation, as they began at the elementary level, preparing their academic and career portfolios, which I'll share with you in just a moment. They continued investigating career options at the middle school level through similar types of career events. As I mentioned earlier, one of our strategic plans and plan objectives was to develop a measure for workplace readiness skills at the middle school level, and we do that through our Career Investigations course. At the high school level, we do that through work-based learning experiences as well as through our WISE Assessment that we provide at the that we give in the Economics and Personal Finance classes. Whereas all of our students, even our youngest learners at the kindergarten level, have opportunities to learn about our 17 career clusters. Our students in grades three and above have access to the Virginia Education Wizard. I have shared this resource in previous presentations about career readiness. It's not only a place for our students to continue to investigate careers, but they also, it also provides them a platform, especially at the elementary level, to begin developing their academic and career portfolios in grades three through five. And this is a document that allows them to identify their personal skills and values and then set some personal goals for themselves. The portfolio is taken with them to middle school, where they're converted into academic and career plans. And those plans guide their course selections through grades eight through 12. So our elementary school counselors really did a wonderful job this year collaborating with many of our business and community partners to bring really real-world experiences into the classroom. And this was done both in the remote setting and in the school buildings. And understanding the importance of introducing our students to a variety of careers within those 17 career clusters that you see on the screen, they invited scientists, medical professionals, a culinary specialist, which I probably needed to attend that one, financial planners and other professionals into both the virtual classroom and the, and in the schools. What I appreciated was that they leveraged our technology tools to really broaden the scope of student experiences. And you can kind of see that on the slide with our students in McGruder there. They are actually listening to a CRO from Indeed.com. And he's not from around here. And he shared with them his career path, but because it was virtual, they were able to connect over that long distance, right? So that's, that's something we can continue into the future. And then in the bottom left-hand corner, you see one of our young students at York Elementary School using their iPad, which they were issued this year. And they are accessing a site called Flipgrid with a, through a QR code. And they were able to listen to professionals share their career experiences. The other thing I liked about this project was the fifth graders researched careers, and they were able to post those on Flipgrid for the young learners to access as well. So at the middle school level, our two York County School Division career coaches, they developed a really extraordinary virtual career fair for our, for our middle school students. Because we know we have some students in the classroom and some still virtual. And this was a very comprehensive Canvas course that they developed. Students start by doing a career interest inventory, and then they have an area where they can go and really explore the career that they're interested in. And they can go on virtual tours, they can play games, there's trivia. There's just a wide variety of resources for them to really dig deeper into those career pathways that they're interested in. And so the other thing it has on is an expo hall, where, which highlights businesses, military, and post-secondary education. There's a section for students to learn about work-based learning experiences, specialty programs, and clubs. And what's so great about this is we can continue to use this in the future. It's going to stay with us. As you're aware, the board approved two career coaches back in 2019. And they serve, each served two high schools. And what they've done this year is they've really branched into the middle schools. And this is an example by, by creating this resource. But one of the other things they did is they provided a lot of support to one of our new middle school courses. It's the entrepreneurship course. I'm going to share a little bit about that course. So this is a new course this year. It is a class where students can, they identify a real-world problem, something that's meaningful to them, and then they develop a solution in the form of a product or a service. So what's so great about this course is that they have mentors from the business world. And our career coaches were very instrumental in using our Engaged In database to secure these mentors who met with the students virtually in their student groups and provided them feedback on their business plans and such. And so our career coaches, they trained them, they, they vetted them, they assigned them to classes and that sort of thing. So the, the slide that you see shows some of the projects that our students worked on. And the theme this year was recycle, reuse, and reduce, reuse, and recycle. And the example on the screen is where student, one student group took some old jeans and they repurposed them to make a book bag, which I thought was very clever. And so what's exciting is that we'll have this course at the high school next year. It was approved for our Program of Studies. And the last time I checked, which was just a few days ago, we had almost 90 students already registered between our four high schools for the high school class. And it's a, you know, we've learned, if we've learned anything, one thing this year is that entrepreneurship is really, you know, solving problems and there's really a need for it. In addition, it covers all of the career clusters, entrepreneurship does. The other thing, through a grant that we applied for last year, we're going to integrate entrepreneurship at the elementary level as well through our Makerspaces. So we're excited about that. So here are just a few comments from some of the mentors who participated with the Make It Your Business course. And I really appreciated the feedback that they provided us as we move forward. I also have a quick video of one of our students. Now, she made this video. The, the class made videos to tell other kids about the course and what to expect. So that's what you're going to hear when she shares.
Hello, my name is Brittany Ernest, and I'm from the Make It Your Business class. I really like this class. It really enhanced my love for business, and it really helped me get off my fear of presenting in front of people, which is a really good thing. This class will keep you busy, so just keep that in mind when you sign up for it, that you will have some work to do. I really like this class.
So it is, it is a rigorous class, but the kids love it. They learned so many skills. So let's move on to high school. So here is just a few samples of what we had going on at the high school. We, this year, we had over 80 guest speakers visit our classrooms to share their experiences in a variety of careers. I mean, just again, like the elementary school, medical careers, banking, retail. On the slide, you see some guest speakers from the architecture and construction professions. Other examples are tech ed courses had speakers from Old Dominion's Virginia Modeling, Analysis, and Simulation Center, as well as Thomas Nelson's Mechanical Engineering Program come in and share with the students. In the past, I presented on Bite of Reality, which is a, Bayport comes in and the kids participate in a challenge through an app, and they learn how to budget. And they presented different scenarios. And I really liked to hear the students' feedback when they complete the challenge about how important budgeting is and how it really made them aware of how they need to spend their money. And finally, our career coaches, along with our Coordinator of School Counseling and our Coordinator of Career Development, they hosted 17 college and career cafes this year for our high school students. They were offered on Wednesdays. They had good participation. In addition to businesses such as the Newport News Shipbuilding and NASA, they also had a lot of local universities participate. And as well as some of our specialty programs were highlighted, such as our Early College Program, York River Academy, and Junior ROTC. So this was an event I was very excited about. So in the past, we've had mock interviews where our business partners have come in and provided, and have interviewed our high school students, right? And so this year, we had to think creatively how to do it differently. So it was done virtually, and over 1,000 students participated in the mock interviews. And we had over 50 business and community partners participate. And Ms. Garels, I believe you and Dr. Shandor participated in that, and I want to thank you for supporting that. I hope you found it to be a good experience. And that's a skill our, our students will need to know, right? Because, you know, we, we teach them a lot of times how to interview in person, but that virtual interview is very important now, right? And so, and I was very happy to see that all 17 career clusters were represented in those mock interviews. I did post a comment from one of our TAB High School students who was very appreciative of the experience and learned from it. But I also want to share with you just one of our business partners, giving her a little testimonial here.
Hi, my name is Garika. This was my first time volunteering with Engaged In. I participated as a mock interviewer, and I also did a career day presentation for one of the classes. The teachers and staff were so very pleasant and professional. They provided clear and concise instructions to participate in this virtual event. I had an opportunity to meet some really amazing students that left a lasting impression with me. I really enjoyed participating in this event, and I definitely look forward to doing it again in the future.
So as I mentioned earlier, one of our strategic plan objectives is a measure of workplace readiness skills. And through our work-based experiences, that's how we measure that with our high school students. And we also have an objective for our students to participate in one of these before graduation. This year presented the challenge to get into the workplace, right? But we did have 272 students participate in work-based learning experiences this year. Many of those were from our career mentorship classes that, at our high schools. And I have included some pictures of some of our students in their work environments this year. But we had, we had a variety of students going out in the, in the workplace and getting those experiences this year. So the last objective is about our high-demand career clubs at the elementary and middle school level. And having our students exposed to things like robotics, engineering, and that type. Well, we had some constraints with the pandemic this year. So I'm not going to show you the number of clubs, but I'm going to show you the examples of clubs where our schools really persisted and continue to offer not just clubs, but other experiences to give our students exposure to these high-demand career fields. So when our students were remote and hybrid, we had a group of a reading coach, a math coach, a STEM coach, one of our IICs all worked together, and they used one of our new platforms that we had this year, Seesaw, to provide the activity you see in the top right-hand corner. These were weekly STEM lessons that they put together for grades K through 2. And not only did they integrate the standards of learning for math and reading, but they had STEM challenges as well. And each week included a fiction and non-fiction book for the students to read. And then they had a lot of activities to participate in that went along with the text. You also see on the slide, when our students got back into the building, you have a picture here of one of our classes at TAB Elementary doing robotics with the Spheros, where they had a Revolutionary War parade. And the kids had to code the robots to go a certain path. But not only did they move in a certain path, they spoke. So they'd say, "Give me liberty," or, "Give me depth," you know? And they, they had all these little phrases they coded. And then we had the 3D printers going this year. You see an example here of Julia, who created a nameplate in Braille. They were studying famous Americans, and Helen Keller was the person they were studying. So this lesson not only taught the technology, but empathy as well. And even our Library and Media Specialist, you see a picture here of one of our students at, in a library doing an engineering project with our Cuba Planks. Several of our schools did have clubs and, as well as expos. And so one example here is, is a, is a virtual club where one of our teachers had a weekly STEM challenge. And this is a second grade student in the top right-hand corner. And they were invited to participate in these challenges with their families and get them away from the computer and moving and doing critical thinking and creativity. And then I have some examples of some of the robotics clubs and engineering clubs. These two are from York Elementary. The other thing that is going on right now and has been going on for the past couple of weeks, we, we did do a STEM virtual expo using Flipgrid again. And students are posting the challenges and their responses to that on the Flipgrid platform. So on to middle school. You may have seen this story on one of our local news channels recently. So back in February, within the building, a group of TAB Middle School students began a club called Making a Difference. And their goal was to identify a real-world problem and use STEM skills and the engineering design process to find a solution. Well, the group met Zoe, who was one of our second grade students, and she loves playing with her brother. I mean, they, they just play all the time, and her brother loves the Nerf Blaster. Well, because Zoe has a syndrome called aniotic band syndrome, it prevented her hands from growing and forming normally. So she, she really wanted a Nerf Blaster attachment to her prosthetic. And so this club did that. They created that for her. They worked with Nerf engineers, engineers from Hasbro, ECPI for some of the imaging tools. And they also worked with a local prosthetic clinician and to create this Nerf Blaster attachment for her prosthetic. And it was just a great project. I did want to mention that her mother has written a book called I Am Zoe that talks about her unique differences. And we do have that book in all of our elementary and middle school libraries. And Queens Lake Middle School did a STEM challenge with families. And this was through their PTA who got involved. They were awarded a national grant, and they got the families involved using the engineering design process, which is so important with STEM. And they had a local engineer judge, and you see some of the examples of what the students made. They put together little packets for them to pick up and participate in the challenges, and students sent in their pictures and videos. They had approximately 90 families participate in this. So what I have shared with you is just a sampling of some of the amazing work of our students, teachers, staff, and families this year. I had a plethora of things to share, but time permits that. But we want to thank you for your support this year as we continue to make progress in this area. And I'm really happy to receive any comments or questions you may have at this time.
Mine was just a comment. I just wanted to commend the career coaches. I know for the mock interviews and even for being a mentor for the Make It Your Business class, I felt prepared. Their communication was excellent. They always made sure I knew exactly what I was supposed to do, where I was supposed to be, and exactly what was expected of me. So I just want to say I really appreciate that. They were right on it, so it's great.
The mock interviews I thought were really well-done. I was wondering if this next year, if you would combine both virtual and in-person?
I, I think that's a great suggestion, because our, our students will face those experiences in the future.
Thank you very much for that update, Dr. Cagle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cagle. We appreciate that.
Our next presentation is on family engagement. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. Next, we're going to bring up Ms. Cheryl Parr, Associate Director of School Administration. She's going to update the board on Goal Four of the FY 1822 Strategic Plan as it relates to family engagement. Ms. Parr.
Good evening, Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will provide for you a strategic plan update on Goal Four, School Culture, specifically addressing the area of family engagement. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Now we'll move forward. Our current strategic plan objective for family engagement closely partners with the school culture objectives that Dr. Butler reviewed for you last month. Those focus on cultural awareness and fostering respect for families of diverse cultures. The objective that you see here requires each school to include a family engagement focus within their school improvement plans. Because of this year's virtual and hybrid schedules, of course, those plans have looked somewhat different than usual. However, our schools have created many ways for our families to be engaged and involved. Our focus for working with families is now on this difference, the difference between family involvement and family engagement. We have a responsibility to ensure that our efforts to partner with our families really engages them in ways that all of them can participate. Keeping a focus on this concept will be important for our next steps. I will now share information for you about the types of activities and resources that schools have provided to our families. Several years ago, Dr. Shandor challenged all of us to make connections with all of our YCSD students. When the pandemic began, and as we started this school year, as you know, students were 100% virtual, we quickly realized that making connections with families as well as students would be the glue that would hold us together until we could resume school in person. One of the most important ways our schools have connected with families is to go to them. Home visits have been for a variety of reasons, including the Student of the Month recognitions that you see here. As you know firsthand from the Senior of the Month visits that you make, connecting with students and families in this way has really made a difference. Being able to connect, to celebrate accomplishments, to provide instructional information, to give supplies, food, and even encouraging words has been really helpful. Because families have not been able to come into our schools this year in normal ways, elementary schools have made a lot of virtual connections through Microsoft Teams. These have included family conferences and parent workshops on a variety of topics, such as how to best help their students at home with things like student motivation or even goal-setting. PTA or School Activity Nights have also included fun components to involve the whole family, and that has happened often. Many elementary events have included an academic focus. As you just heard from Dr. Cagle, several schools had STEM Expo Nights, including an engineering design process to explore STEM careers. Literacy Nights have occurred throughout the year. One example is the One School, One Book Scavenger Hunt held by Yorktown Elementary that included five stops for families to make in their cars to find clues out about a book. Some schools held virtual before, school clubs also with parent support. Middle schools have worked really hard to expand parent awareness of ways that they can connect with their children's schools. They have offered online family engagement sessions on a variety of topics at different times of the day. Queens Lake Middle School, as you also heard from Dr. Cagle, partnered with PTA to write a grant for STEM Challenge Kits, and then families worked on those together at home. Fun Events for Families has included virtual trivia nights, outdoor concerts, and even food trucks in school parking lots. High schools have continued to engage families instructionally by offering different types of events, such as how to connect with teachers and course planning. They've provided tech support information to families throughout the year to make these processes as easy as possible. They have also kept a focus on providing experiences for both students and families. This has been accomplished with virtual or socially-distanced concerts, drive-up awards events, and even athletic signing days, because we wouldn't want to leave those out. As you already know, YCSD has the highest concentration of military students in the state of Virginia. Schools have strived to continue military family support during this pandemic. They have hosted family pizza drive-through events, art contests, art or obstacle course events, and virtual military parades. And it's also been the honor of several buildings to hold welcome-home events in a surprise fashion for a few of our military students, which I know was very special. I will now review some division-level activities for you about resources that we've provided to our families at the division level. The Division has strived to ensure that families have been informed throughout this school year. That has been very, very important, as you know. In addition to normal processes, the YCSD Return to School Plan provides in-depth and accessible information at all times. Our Chief Operations Officer has given televised updates to the board frequently. Live streaming of school board work sessions and monthly meetings was implemented. And our Public Relations and Communications Officer created Timely YCSD Digest to make families aware of updates and changes, really, as they happened in real time. During this time, parents have had a variety of ways to share their voice, another thing that's very, very important. The ability to provide public comment at school board meetings has continued. The Communications and Public Relations Team has responded to more than 700 parent, student, and community inquiries on matters relating to the Return to School Plan, safety measures, family support, and student enrollment. Parents were asked to participate on numerous committees throughout this year as well to provide input into such areas as returning to school, graduation, equity and diversity, next year's school calendar, special and gifted education, and career and technical education as well. Throughout this year, we have provided information about many family resources. As I alluded to earlier, these have included access to student meals, which you'll hear more about in just a moment, technology support, and childcare. Our Coordinator of School Counseling and counselors at every one of our schools have been purposeful with providing social-emotional learning support for our families too. Instructional information was provided through many avenues, such as the Student Services Newsletter, which shared practical ways for parents to support their students with things like study skills and organization. English learning resources were offered, as well as information, including Career Connections. The Division has offered online parent workshops this year too. Based on the information received from parents who attended some of these offerings, which you see in front of you there, we will look for ways to expand this type of access next school year, because it makes things easier for parents. One of our proudest accomplishments has been the establishment of our Community Engagement Bus with combined efforts of several YCSD departments. We're in the middle right now. Bus with combined efforts of several YCSD departments. We're in the middle right now of the inaugural run of this bus, which will be used to engage with families in multiple ways. We're currently using it to support families with registering students for school. I'll now share some of the next steps that we have planned for next school year for the area of family engagement. Before the pandemic, we began learning about the current framework research from the Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports, or VTSS, regarding how we can increase family engagement and make that shift from family involvement to true engagement. Involving families as equal partners is a key component for this research. A YCSD team also began participating last year in the William &amp; Mary School University Research Network, or CERN, Family Engagement Academy. This work has focused on the five principles that you see here, and information learned from experts in this field is really providing insight for us about how to move forward by embracing, empowering, and engaging every family in multiple ways, not just one set of ways, but in multiple ways. Designing meaningful professional development for all YCSD staff will be key to expanding the area of family engagement because we really need to have common understanding of best practices for working with families. We hope to be able to provide many different types of offerings in the 2122 school year. Last year, the Family Engagement Committee started to review how we can expand our current YCSD parent and family engagement policy by aligning these tenants of the policy with current research, and will continue that next year. In normal times, as you all know, families volunteer hundreds and hundreds of hours to the York County School Division. We could never do what we do on a daily basis without our volunteers. This year, volunteer efforts have looked very different because of the mandated guidelines that we've been required to operate under. However, our families still found many ways to volunteer from afar to greatly make a difference in our schools, such as the project you see here that occurred at Grafton Middle School. We look forward to once again involving and engaging our families through volunteering next school year. Everyone is really chomping at the bit to be able to have our volunteers come back into our schools. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update for Goal Four School Culture about family engagement, and I'm now happy for any comments or questions that you may have.
Just one comment. One of your slides talked about Family Engagement Committee and implementing strategies to involve parents in the educational process. I think that's the big key right there.
Absolutely.
Getting the parents involved. We could do that. We wouldn't have any problems whatsoever with our children and learning. But it's hard for parents, especially single parents and parents that work a lot, and I certainly understand that. But yeah, any way we can find to make that better, and I love everything we're doing in that. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. I think one of the things that we have learned in response to your comment is that we might not need to just go solely back to what we did before, but use some of the things that we have learned this year in ways that families have been involved to be able to move us forward so we can reach every group like what you described.
Absolutely. Good job.
Yeah, and what both presentations highlighted for me is this, again, this commitment to continued measurable improvement despite the challenges of the last year. And my hat's off the entire leadership team and, you know, all the way, obviously, through the schools and at the teacher's level. Again, this commitment to continuous improvement is a sign of a high-functioning organization, you know, up and down channels. So again, hats off to the team. It's wonderful to see.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update, Ms. Parr.
Thank you, Ms. Parr.
Our next update is on meal prices. Dr. Shandor.
Yes, we're going to keep Ms. Parr right where she is. So she is going to present some information related to a food service update, including the USDA guidelines for school meals for the 2021-22 school year. So I'll let her pull up her presentation. Dr. Cagle, we may need your assistance.
Seems like it's always going back to the last page, but we'll try to go through real quickly, having that, and see if we can make it work that way. There we go. All right. So good evening again, and I will now provide for you a food service update regarding the status of student meals for next year and information about our current meal distribution efforts. School meals, of course, are very important. There's a great correlation between good nutrition and academic success. Normally, our division participates in the School Breakfast Program and the National School Lunch Program by following United States Department of Agriculture and Virginia Department of Education guidelines. As you know, SEDEXO is our current food vendor, led by Michelle Knotts and Amanda Fowle, and Kim Roman is our YCSD Manager of Food Services. I am extremely proud of our food service management team and all that has been accomplished since March 16th of last year in response to this pandemic and our mandated closures. During this time, we have been able to provide continual access to nutritious meals. We've operated up to four meal distribution sites at a time and served in-person meals as well as students have returned to school. For meal distribution, our food service team prepares and then serves multiple meals at a time. During most of the pandemic, we've operated under the Summer Food Service Program, or SFSP. This program has allowed us to adjust our normal meal patterns if needed. For example, we've been able to make substitutions if necessary, if there was shortages for vegetables. We've also been able to serve a selected menu. SFSP allows parents to pick up meals without their students being present and has given us permission to provide meals for weekends, which we have done since January. However, even with this SFSP program, the federal guidelines that we've had to abide by have continually changed. Site locations for meal distribution are currently Queens Lake Middle, Grafton High, Tab High, and York High, which allows easy access for all of our YCSD families. Meals are served one day each week through a curbside grab-and-go process. Families unable to come to these sites, contact us by phone or by email to make arrangements for home delivery. Our Transportation Department staff have greatly assisted with this process. We're currently delivering meal bags to 289 students' homes by bus on each of our service days. The coordination of the home delivery effort by transportation has made a real difference for families that otherwise might not have been able to access these meals. Throughout this process, I have to be serious and tell you, we've experienced some very real challenges. Staffing was initially very difficult. When we were first closed, our management team and only 12 YCSD food service staff were the ones who made these meals. That was because the SEDEXO staff, the majority of them, were furloughed from last March to the beginning of this school year. As we started out, the commitment of those we did have was absolutely incredible. Their only focus was getting meals to those who would benefit from having them. Then, as SEDEXO staff began returning last fall, everyone has continued to be tremendously dedicated to our mission of getting quality food to children when they need it. At our peak, we served 34,000 meals in one two-hour window on one of our service days. Because of that high volume, we have learned a lot about the best ways to serve these meals. Over time, we have bagged things differently, and we've changed how we serve milk and juice. Instead of using the single-serve milk cartons, which had to be counted out and bagged, which was very laborious, we shifted to serve half gallon and then full gallons of milk. The same happened for juice. We also wanted to make things as easy as possible for our staff because serving meals can be physically taxing with the continual lifting that our staff does. As I mentioned before, in January of this year, we were able to begin serving meals for weekends, which required more meals to be prepared. And then in April, we shifted our service model again as all students returned to in-person learning. As families pick up meals now, we use a yellow and red car tag system on rearview mirrors to designate who needs what in their bags as they come through our service lines, depending on whether students are a part of the extended hybrid model or if they are virtual. Some cars attending distribution need meal bags for both types of students. As of the end of May, we've served over 1.3 million meals through distribution and over 400,000 in-person meals since the pandemic began. To ensure family awareness regarding meal access, we've provided information through a number of ways. This has included a dedicated email and phone number just for answering questions about food access. We will continue providing access to meals this summer until school starts again on August 30. Students attending Summer Academy will be provided in-person meals, and meals will also be provided through meal distribution. We do plan to consolidate efforts and have only three distribution sites instead of four, which will meet our current demand, which has lessened as our school year has continued. Regarding next year, I usually provide a recommendation for meal prices with this presentation, but because of COVID-19, meals were provided at no cost for students this school year. Meals will continue to be free for the entire year in 2122. We will be required to shift from the SFSP model that I referenced before to the Seamless Summer Option, or what we call SSO. SSO gives us the ability to have a set menu plan, but we plan to continue providing menu options because we know that's what our students are interested in. In addition, meals will still be provided to families that choose the virtual instruction option for next year. Even though meals will be free, YCSD families should still complete next year's application for free and reduced-price school meals. If families qualify for these meals, even though the meals are already free, they may still be eligible for other resources. These may include pandemic electronic benefit transfers that are provided through the Virginia Department of Social Services, or YCSD resources such as waiving athletic or academic fees. As you're aware from each month's financial report, YCSD receives federal reimbursement for each meal served in the amounts you see here. Reimbursements will continue in 2122. Lastly, meals are offered to adults as well as students in our school cafeterias. For next year, no increases are recommended for adult meals. SEDEXO is working very hard to replace staff who did not return when school started again this past fall. They are currently at about a 65% staff fill rate, similar to what many businesses in our country are experiencing, but they continue to bring new staff onboard every week and feel like as the summer progresses, we will really be close to where we were before the pandemic started. Again, thanks to our food service team for all they've done in the last 15 months to ensure our students had access to nutritious meals. They have made meals and served them when it's been hot, when it's been cold, when it's been rainy, when it's been sunny, in the light of day or the dark of night. And so we appreciate all that these teams have done at each one of these meal distribution sites, as well as in our cafeterias on a daily basis, too. And we also appreciate, lastly, the support of our wonderful YCSD families because they have been absolutely amazing during this entire process. So thank you for this opportunity to provide this update, and I'm now happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Parr, you mentioned the possibility to provide meals for the virtual students next year. Do we know if we'll be able to provide food for students who are going to be in-person, who might continue to have some food insecurity, particularly on the weekends?
We do feel that we will be able to provide whatever everyone needs. We're still getting clarification from our School Nutrition Office at VDOE about the ability to provide for weekends. So we're not quite sure if that's a go yet, but we hope to have that information soon.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions. I have some families who've reached out to me with some questions about our meals, so I'm going to pass those along to you tonight. What is the process for a student in school who might need more food than what is provided with the meal that they're given in-person?
So with the guidelines that we're now operating under and will be operating under next year, one meal is free. Additional meals or other à la carte items must be purchased, and students must have money either with them or in their accounts, which they still have, because charges are not allowed with the program that we have now. But we do encourage our students to make sure that they're taking all the components that they're offered. For example, our high school students have the ability to receive some more items on their lunch trays than our elementary students do. It's an entree, a couple of vegetables, a couple of fruits, you know, and a milk or a juice. And we find sometimes, you know, as students go through the line, they'll just say that they want, you know, one item of this and one item of that, but we encourage them to take everything. So one meal is provided free of charge, but if they want to have additional food, it can be purchased.
Okay. And then what about students who pack? I know that they're not necessarily sectioned off when they come into the lunchroom, but if a student packs partial lunch, are they still eligible to get that free lunch and can get the line to do that as well?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then what is the policy for leftover food? I know they, I mean, they're pretty, pretty strict with what they're doing in there, but I just wondered what the process was for leftover food. Is it stored at the end of the day?
So it really depends on the item and what it is. For example, if we have leftover apples and those are still good, and we can keep those refrigerated to be able to serve again the next day as an option for students, we will continue to use that item, you know, until we can't use it anymore. Other items, it really just depends on what it is. You know, if it's a piece of pizza, we might not be able to keep that, you know, because reheating, you know, we might not be able to serve that item again. It really just depends on what the item is.
And then I think when we went on our visits, I think it was for the 1 million meals, you said that it wasn't just York County School Division employees and SEDEXO employees, but there were actually volunteers that showed up to help with those meal distribution sites. Is that true?
We have had volunteers help us. We've had teachers, we've had parents, some of our administrators, some of the people in this room. We've had a lot of help as we've gone through this process, particularly on those high-impact times, as I mentioned, when we were doing, you know, up to 30,000 meals on a service day. We needed all the help that we could get at those times.
I think that's great. And I was just thinking, over the summer, if they're short-staffed, if we can call on our students. I know a lot of them need those volunteer hours, and this year it has been really hard for them to get those volunteer hours. So if we can find a way to engage especially our high school students and possibly our middle school students that need those hours for Honor Society, I think that'd be a great, great idea.
We have had some student volunteers. For example, when we first shifted to those gallons of milk that I referenced, we had some football players that were helping us lift. So that was greatly appreciated.
You don't need to go to the gym after you're doing it, though, right?
That's right.
When you're there, so.
Multiple carts.
Thank you for answering all those questions.
Absolutely.
I just have a quick comment. I was there when we were doing the initial distributions back at McGruder, back in the spring of last year, and it has changed so much in the distribution since then. The learning curve was so quick, and y'all have done such a great job. I mean, it's amazing. It really is.
We've learned a lot.
Definitely a smooth operation.
One last question. SSO model for the summer will also include meal delivery?
We actu-, yes, it will. But we actually are continuing with the SFSP throughout the summer. We'll shift to that SSO in the fall. But we will continue meal delivery for any family who needs it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parr.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parr.
Our next presentation is on the 2021-22 Student Handbook. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. We're going to bring up Dr. Aaron Butler, Director of School Administration. Board members, you receive this update once a year, as you're used to it. So he's going to, Dr. Butler is going to provide an overview of proposed revisions, modifications, deletions, and additions to our student handbooks. I'll turn it over to Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, thank you for this opportunity to present revisions to the Student Handbook and Conduct Code for the 2021-2022 school year. Per the Code of Virginia, local school boards are required to adopt and revise the standards of student conduct in alignment with the Virginia Board of Education Model Policy. While not required by state law, our division annually provides families with information concerning academic, operational, and financial practices, along with related policies. It is important that parents and students review the Student Handbook annually to ensure that they are aware of important information concerning testing, behavior expectations, academics, and division procedures. The Virginia Board of Education revised the Model Policy for Student Conduct in 2019 for implementation during the 2021 school year. Due to the onset of COVID-19, the Virginia Department of Education delayed the implementation of both the New Model Guidance and the Student Behavior Administrative Response, known as SBAR, Data Collection System, until the 2021-2022 school year. known as SBAR, Data Collection System, until the 202122 school year. Tonight, the revisions that are required will be presented in this presentation. And in addition, an official notice of parental responsibilities related to children's education and all compulsory attendance regulations had also been revised. To frame the presentation this evening, I have placed the revisions into four categories. The first section will address editorial revisions to the handbook that do not make substantial changes to division policy or procedures. The second section will address content revisions to align with adopted policy or practice changes. The third section will encompass revisions to the handbook that includes substantial changes to either policy or to practice. And the final portion of the presentation will address changes required by state or federal law. Under editorial revisions, updates for dates, schedules, layout, and calendars. Throughout the entire handbook, we will be redesigning and reorganizing to provide additional headers and dividers in the handbook. And then we are going to be shifting and moving some wording around on pages 13, 57, 63, and 97. As well as on the front cover, we always do an update when it comes to the calendar and special events such as early dismissal schedules and the tentative graduation schedule. On pages 5, 13, 14, and 16, there will be some grammatical updates. Again, these are non-content-related changes and we provide you a list of the different categories in which they fall. There'll be a continuation of editorial changes on pages 21 through 23, 29, 30, and 31. And again, there's no content change, just grammatical edits. And finally, on page 31 and 32, this is the last section for grammatical edits. On page 32, there is one removal. The IBDP examination schedule, that information is being taken out of the book because that would be emailed to schools and families directly. That information changes and sometimes that is not updated by the time that we publish the book and present it. So that's why that's being removed, but that information will still be provided to families and students. In the instructional section for middle and high school information, there are cer- certain sections that are being removed and it's not because it's not needed, it's just that they are now putting that information in the Program of Studies manual and so that information prevent redundancy and to make sure it's always accurate, it will stay housed in that particular format. And then finally, the Family Life Education Removal Form, which is in the back of the handbook. Traditionally, that's been signed and turned in. Now that form has been placed into the RICOR system and so families will no longer need to pull it out and sign it. They'll just need to go on RICOR and check off. And so that form was updated. And so that concludes the minor grammatical changes. So I will pause for a moment and see if there's any questions before I move on to the next section. Under content revisions, on page three for instruction, there's both a deletion and a revision for the child find. So the division doesn't does not use screening but evaluation-based data to determine whether a child has a disability. And so the language here has just been edited to reflect that practice and the referral process that we use here in the division. On page four, we have some information for contact lens, which is a little outdated. Our Health Services Coordinator informed us that this information is no longer relevant and so we will be removing that from the handbook, that entire section. And then under the Career Counseling, there's a information about service learning. That is being removed so that will align with the Program of Studies description under that particular topic. On page eight, there's a revision. So for Family Life Education, that program is offered for students in grades K through 10, is linked to our PE and health curriculum. And so the book was just amended to reflect that and that's also mirrored in the Program of Studies. On page 10, under the Gifted Education Advisory Committee called GAC, the meetings for GAC are not advertised on a TV channel. That is something that's been in the book for some time. We do provide meeting notices, both posted in the lobby, we also provide on our website. And so in order to make sure that we're compliant with all public notifications and Freedom of Information Act compliance statutes, we had to make some adjustments and changes to that. But that is the only change, just about the removal for TV channel. Everything else is consistent with regulations. On page 10, there was a few changes. One, for gifted education, language referencing the screening process was added to align with current practice. And then, again, that was just an addition as the committee has gone through doing some revisions and looking at the book. They realized that information was not clearly defined and so it was added to the handbook. Also on page 10, under grading, there was two things that were added for clarification. Some sentences were added and some language deleted. We, as we know, our kindergarten for first grade students, they'll be receiving standards-based report cards and so because of that, they will not be receiving interim report cards and so that language was clarified. And then our students who are in grades two through 12, they will receive interim report cards and so they just wanted to make sure that was correct in the handbook. On page 17, there is one word replacement. So the English Learner's Program, the wording has been changed from English Language Proficiency Standards to English Language Development. And that's to align with the new 2020 World Class Instructional Design and Assessment, we call it AWEETA. And those standards were just updated for that particular paragraph. On page 23, there was an addition for the promotion policy. Additional language was added to clarify for families that considerations for acceleration follow the division's standard operational procedure. And then on page 27, the New Horizons Educational Center, that language was also removed and deleted because that is being encompassed in another section of the handbook, as well as being included in the Program of Studies. On page 30, there was a language revision for the Special Education Advisory Committees. Currently, the language says that interested individuals need to submit a letter to the Director of Student Services, but that is not consistent with our practice. People who are interested have to fill out an application and then that application is sent along with all the documents to the Director of Student Services. And so that process has just been clarified here and the language changed to reflect that practice. On page 38, for Academic Achievement, language was edited to reflect that awards will be based on the previous year's fourth quarter and the first, second, and third quarters of the current year. Again, that goes back to when we have our recognitions to make sure that students from that year prior, they'll take that last quarter and then they'll use the first, second, and third. That was not clearly defined in the book and so that's just been clarified for families and students. On page 93, there was one addition. On the Student Handbook and Code of Conduct Family Acknowledgement Form that students and families fill out, in the new guidance that we provided from the Department of Education, they're requiring that we do more proactive and restorative practices and so there's a conflict resolution and restorative conferencing session. So that is now a sign-off. We added that section last year and I presented it to the board during our updates for the last school year. Now it just needs to be clarified so that parents are aware that that is in the handbook, that there are options for students like peer mediation, restorative conferences to resolve conflict. On page 99, there was a deletion for the Student Parent Technology Usage Form. Prior to our one-to-one device adoption, students were allowed to bring their own privately-owned devices and so there's some changes that we made when we adopted the one-to-one program. So we had to make those changes in the handbook so that the two mirrored each other. And so that's why the language was there, to make sure that AUP policy was consistent in both this document and the one-to-one device document. And so that is all the updates for that particular section. And so I will take a pause to see if there's any questions or comments before I move on to the next section.
You mentioned you updated the CAC process with the application. The board asked the GAC to do the same thing. So is there similar wording in there for the Gifted Education Advisory Committee as well?
Yes, sir. Both of it. So that is the practice that we were being adopting as a division and so we wanted to make sure that all that was uniform. I would defer that to, I believe that is correct, Mrs. Skinner.
So we'll look at that to make sure that was a change that we made. Pardon me. That was a change that we made this year. And so we'll go back and make sure that that does mirror that same process through the application because that should be amended.
Okay, thank you.
So all the forms that for all those years that we signed, we ripped out of that and sent in, all of those will be submitted through RICOR electronically now or will families still need to be ripping it out of the book and sending that in with their student as well?
No. We started practices last year, but yes, all those forms, you can now just put in RICOR and you can sign off, similar to the Family Education Removal Form as well. So all those forms are now housed in RICOR. We always print a copy. The Code of Virginia requires that we give a written copy to families. So even though it's electronic, if someone said that, well, I want a written copy of this particular document, we have to provide it. So we always print some copies, but the majority of divisions have all shifted to electronic distribution of these forms and handbooks.
Okay, thank you.
So just a clarification, that the handbooks are electronic now as well?
Yes, sir. No, going forward, there will be electronic, particularly with the one device, one-to-one device program. However, we still print a certain number of hard copies because we still have families who they request a hard copy and that's okay.
Well, I know we've been talking about this for several years. I've been on the board about switching over to electronic, so this is where we're there. So thank you. Appreciate that.
It helped with the one-to-one device, too, because now we can guarantee, now that we know that students have those, then they'll have access to those particular resources.
Perfect.
Under substantial changes, on pages 17 through 20, there was some updates we had to make to the language there for the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act Notice. And so the language there was edited and revised to align with the guidance issued through the one-to-one device program and also to align with Internet safety regulations. So there were just some changes that particularly, that language was always there, but we had to provide some updates. And so there was a substantial change. Just because we now have the one-to-one device, we had to add some additional language for students. On page 30, under Early Childhood, Special Education, the word third was added to reflect that at-risk students who have reached their third birthday are eligible for the Virginia Preschool Initiative Program or VPI. The last sentence of the paragraph was deleted. Prior to this, again, that was not the wording. I believe it was fourth, four, fourth year. They dropped it down one year to third year. On page 31, the Iowa Test of Basic Skills, that entire section has been deleted. The division no longer administers the Iowa Test of Basic Skills and so that was removed. And then under page 31 for SAT subject test, College Board has discontinued offering SAT subject tests as of June 2021 and so that was removed. Again, they still offer the regular SAT test, but not the subject test. And those were the end of the substantial changes and then I just have the final one for regulation changes. So I'll go ahead and then I'll ask questions at the end for that. Under Regulation Changes, on page one, there was an addition to the Attendance Excused Absences. In compliance with the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunities for Military Children and Updates to the Code of Virginia, children of active duty members of the Uniformed Services are granted additional excused absences to visit with a parent or legal guardian on leave from or have immediately returned from deployment to a combat zone or combat support posting. Again, that was just added because that was not something that was previously in the book, but it also was not something that was previously in the Code of Virginia. Under Enrollment, there's a few immunization changes that are required. And so for rising kindergarteners, there are two hepatitis A vaccinations for rising seventh graders, one meningitis vaccination, and then for rising 12th graders. And these are all things that have been passed through the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education. On page 54, there was a relocation in addition. There are certain legal citations that the Department of Education provide when it comes to removal of students or notification to the superintendent of certain violations of the law. Certain things have to be reported to Dr. Shandor and of course, that gets relayed to our office, as well as the admission of students who have been suspended or expelled from private schools in Virginia. So those citations had to be placed in the new handbook because that's part of the new model policy. On page 54 through 74, that is where the bulk of the changes have been placed for the Code of Conduct. So our handbook now aligns 100% with the Virginia Board of Education Model Policy for Student Conduct. And again, these are things that were required by the Code of Virginia and that were passed back in 2019, but have to be implemented for the 2122 school year. Finally, for, on page 84 through 88, for a school board policy, GBA or JFHA, prohibition against harassment and retaliation. Back in January, the board updated this policy that was submitted by the Human Resource Department. These two policies mirror each other. One is for employees and one is for students. And so we had to make sure that was updated in the handbook for students for that particular component. So thank you for this opportunity to present revisions to the student handbook and conduct code. I am now available for any questions that you may have.
I'm just, I'm asking about the immunizations. How are we communicating those changes with families? I'm assuming we have to start doing that this year to make sure they're ready for those. And that might be not be a Dr. Butler question, that might be somebody else's. I apologize.
So our Health Services Coordinator, Mrs. Hutchinson, she always gets with our Public Relations Department and with Mrs. Parr to make sure that information is placed out for families with communication. And so she will be working with them to make sure that occurs.
I believe it did go out in one of the YCSD digests.
The most recent.
Last month or so.
Well, we all know that going out one time isn't enough.
Reminders of existing.
And some of these changes were just recently, that's because normally we tried to wait to do this presentation because sometimes the state, they make changes, but then there's a delay in when it's rolled out to school divisions. And so this is one of the late things that was provided to us just the last couple of weeks.
Well, thank you very much for that update, Dr. Butler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
Yes. Our next presentation is a pay plan update. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Dr. Higginbotham.
I'll take it.
Or Mr. Higginbotham. Our next two presentations, Dr. Ledoux, he's going to update us. Our Chief Human Resource Officer is going to provide a brief update on the pay plan. This is part one of the pay plan update. We'll give the board the the next update at the meeting on the 14th. And then he's going to follow that up with a quick F, item F on the board agenda is a very brief adjustment. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Ledoux.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board. Tonight, I'll provide one update for the FY22 Pay Plan. The remaining updates, as Dr. Shandor shared, will be come before you enter the next board meeting. Dr. Shandor shared for the past several years during the proposed budget presentation that the entire nation is grappling with teacher shortages and this will be of increasing concern to YCSD. Though somewhat dated, this comprehensive, as well as respective, study continues to be the premier resource which projects the anticipated shortages at the national level. As you can see on this graph, the demand for teachers will significantly outpace supply through at least 2025 and beyond. As such, attracting top talent and hiring top talent is one of the most important functions of the school division as we anticipate the future ahead. Action is required to respond to both the actual and anticipated teacher shortages. A key component of these actions is the initial compensations or compensation teachers are offered when considering taking jobs with YCSD. While I already shared the national teacher shortage on the previous graph, this slide shows the YCSD hiring trends of teachers who are listed on the Virginia Department of Education Critical Shortage List. The list is published annually and is posted on the VDOE website. The red line on this graph represents a percent of teachers YCSD hired each year in the top three on the critical shortage list. While there are annual variations in FY2010, 10% of teachers who were hired that year were in the top three on the critical shortage list. Just last year, however, that number has incrementally risen to 63% of all teachers hired who are in the top three on the critical shortage list. So what does this mean? It means that the majority of teachers who apply to YCSD are in the critical shortage list and they're entertaining multiple offers in our comparative market before deciding to take a job. So as they continue to discount up to three steps for teachers when the job offer is made, in light of this growing need, YCSD will be less and less competitive in attracting top talent. As I shared on the previous slide, YCSD discounts new teachers three jobs when making the job, three steps when making the job offer. On this slide, I would like to share some important facts and implications. First, in checking with our colleagues, we're the only school division who does not or who does this on the peninsula and the south side or our comparative market. Second, as we began recording this data in 2019, one-third of all those offers we lost was due to the reduction of steps. Third, as a division restores steps, the starting pay for teachers has remained relatively unchanged. It doesn't affect starting pay, the restored steps. affect starting pay, the restored steps. In other words, the effect of restoring steps is driven down the starting pay for teachers. These are the brand-new zero years out of college or re-entering or entering the workforce. Lastly, the practice of discounting new teacher hires' three steps also impacts new hires that are not on the critical shortage list. A review of the most unfilled positions in YCSD shows other hard-to-fill areas such as French, Spanish, American Sign Language, special education, multiple disabilities, and social workers or other on teacher contracts. So based on these factors, YCSD no longer will discount new qualifying hires on teacher contracts beginning with FY22. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide this update. At this time, I am open for your questions and comments.
Dr. Vladu, I know we, after we did a couple restored steps, we actually revised our pay plan, correct, in the school division?
Yes, sir. That is a great question. When we have seven market adjustment and we review our compensation, the board has committed to raising compensation, and those seven market adjustment or adjustments to the teacher scale under positive are really reflected in the history of compensation.
Right. Okay. And I thought so from a discussion I'd had with Dr. Shandor some weeks back, that we, I'd asked that question, but I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
You know, I know the focus is on the steps with regard to new hires, but I know the last time we had an opportunity to speak, we mentioned retention. So I'm just going to deviate a little bit. Do the retention numbers, so when we look at retirements and resignations, Dr. Vladu, still generally consistent with where we were last year at this time and the year before, perhaps?
Yes, sir. Actually, we're down a little bit from my time in HR. Again, it's been going on my third year now. My first year, we had a lot more than we had last year. This year, we expected to be some rise somewhat, but never to really previous levels before the pandemic.
Okay, so we don't assume significant number of resignations or retirements. I know it's difficult to anticipate, but I suspect leaders are talking to teachers this summer as we, you know, roll into the next school year. You feel pretty comfortable based on all we know?
Certainly, I think that's a great segue into, we have a process about announced retirements and resignation. There is a memo that goes out to all staff very early on because as you'll remember, the hiring timeline for teachers really goes out to July fifteenth. So all of our staff had an opportunity to be honest and direct to their supervisors and the HR department and announce that because it's very difficult to hire a teacher in Virginia after July fifteen. So I think we're in a good place with that data.
Yeah, and I'm impressed with the level of commitment, you know, at the, at the teachers' level too, obviously. Okay, thank you. Great update.
Thank you.
I know one of the slides showed the, your anticipated shortfall of teachers that are entering the field or getting ready to graduate from the field, which really makes me sad, obviously, as a parent of a future teacher. But one of my questions is, what work are we doing with our local colleges? I know that a couple of surrounding divisions provide provisional license to students instead of doing their student teaching. And I know that that's kind of, that's hard for some students to turn down. So I just wonder how we're partnering with the local universities to, to get those teachers as they're graduating.
That's a great question. So despite the pandemic, I have Dr. Amanda Corbin stating here, we held just about every single university visit this spring. However, it was virtual, and then we invited some of our administrators. We also are developing our internal pipeline. The program of studies included a new course to grow teachers that are, you know, for instance, an eleventh or twelfth grader interested in the profession can take a course now. And again, I know we've taken a little bit, we stay steady with the pandemic, but we're looking forward to actually re-engaging and growing those, those programs.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vladu, for that update.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
And I believe we have a short presentation here for the twelve-month employee calendar update.
We do. We do. Dr. Vladu?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Higginbotham, and members of the board. I do have a very short calendar update for twelve-month employees. Again, this only applies to one employee group. In prior years, the twelve-month employees on their work calendar included nineteen holidays. These are not just recognizable holidays, but there are some additional days that are, they're required to work during spring break and winter break. Again, these are twelve-month employees. This year's calendar includes twenty days, which was unintentional. What it did is reduced the number of workdays by one and added a calendar day, and that was, I mean, a holiday. And that was as a result of the pre-labor day start. Again, it was unintentional to reduce the duration of work for that year. So as such, we're requesting that we add that day back, which keeps us consistent with just about every other year since I've been with YCSD. There are nineteen calendar days, and folks do not have to work an extra day. It's just the same number of days as last year. They fall on different days. And when you do the math and the calculation, no one's going to have to work anymore. It just keeps us consistent. So that change will come before you at the next board meeting.
I do have a quick question about that. I know during the summer, sometimes like the, the office staff and things, they will almost like flex time Monday through Thursday, a couple extra hours to make up the hours for Friday. Is that still going on?
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Certainly, for twelve months during the summer, for as long as I can remember, folks have the option of working their forty hours in four days or five days. We recognize that, again, some folks are working, again, the same, getting the same work done, ensuring that our operational readiness does not suffer in any way, but within that, they could work the forty hours within four days. And often managers, what they'll do, they're staggered the schedule to make sure offices are open.
Okay. And they get credit for that Friday if they do work the forty hours in the first four days?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay, great.
We've communicated. We have added some flexibility for our twelve-month people during the summer as well.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Vladu.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Thank you.
Dr. Shandor, I believe you have a few comments to share.
I do. I just have one item, and Dr. Vladu's going to help me. He's going to pull up the screen for me. So, Dr. Vladu, you can go right to the organizational chart for me. Thank you. All right. So wanted to share with the board this evening just, just a brief adjustment to our organization chart. As you can see on the, thank you, on the slide, where legal services and the board clerk report directly to the board. You can see where our, our chiefs report to me. So as you can see, Dr. Carroll, our Chief Operations Officer, is lifted a little higher. Obviously, that is for when I'm, I don't want to say not around, but if I'm absent or whatnot or out of town, et cetera, he will assume the role and handle all the problems of the day. And then you can see that the Chief Academic Officer, Mr. Bowen is the Chief Financial Officer, and then Dr. Vladu all report directly to me. And then there's the information underneath it or just sort of, we've bucketed major responsibilities in each of those areas. One change that I'm going to make for next year, we, we've had a lot of conversations in our cabinet, and Ms. Skinner brought an idea about two months ago that we've, that we've kicked around for probably six or seven weeks in a row, actually, related to how can we better align some of the work in curriculum and instruction, but also maintain a high level of support and supervision for our schools. So moving forward next year, we are going to move leadership and accountability. So essentially, principal supervision and accountability will fall under me as well as Ms. Goff, her office in Public Relations and Communications. So essentially, Dr. Wrights will be supervising our principals, and he'll be working with our Accountability Department. And Ms. Siders, who was our secondary director, will now be over pre-K through twelve curriculum and instruction. So several thoughts of rationale there. One, VDOE, as I've shared with you during the year, has, there's an increased workload of curriculum and instruction initiatives coming from the Department of Instruction. We receive multiple memorandums a week that have a lot of different changes that are coming, coming down, and it's really stretched Dr. Wrights and Ms. Siders as far as balancing curriculum and instruction for the division as well as getting in the schools and supporting our principals. So also, the coming year is going to bring us many more challenges than we've experienced here as far as getting students to recover from any learning loss. So we want to make sure that remediation and any unfinished learning is focused and aligned as we move to next year. That will be the priority of our curriculum and instruction department. Balancing supervision of principals with supervision of curriculum and instruction, it's been a challenge, as I shared a little bit earlier. It's something that, quite honestly, I've, I've thought about over the last couple of years. And really, this is one of those things that happens during a pandemic that you see as an opportunity to move forward. Also, the division's getting ready to draft a new strategic plan. So I believe this structural change will support the development and implementation of our new strategic plan. This change will be officially effective on, on July one. So I wanted to make sure I shared that information with you this evening. I'm available for any comments or questions you have.
So it sounds like more time in the building, and you're right, to inform the strategic plan, particularly from the building level, would be excellent. Yeah, that's, that's a good recommendation.
Yeah, we, we had some discussions with our principals earlier today, and just sharing this is, you know, where we were headed moving forward. I'm excited for the work that both Ms. Siders and Mr. Wrights will be able to do. As you can imagine, when Dr. Vladu was our secondary director for five or six years, excuse me, and Ms. Skinner was our elementary director for seven or, thank you, seven years. You know, they, the balance was extremely difficult. And back then, they were both auditing their calendars to make sure they were balancing their time between both. And that was not during, you know, a year and a half pandemic. So, you know, so I feel like, you know, making this change is needed for our division, and I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to the changes and how we're going to move forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shandor. That is the last presentation on our agenda for our work session. I appreciate all the time and effort put forth by all YCSD staff to provide the updates to the board. Our work session is now adjourned, and I would like to call to order the June seventh, 2021, special meeting of the York County School Board. We have a few items that do require the board's approval this evening. The first one is a consideration of approval of the nomination submission for the Virginia School Board, School Boards Association Excellence in the Workforce Readiness Award. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some information?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Ms. Skinner is, is at the podium. She's going to share some information related to this. But before she does that, I did want to lift up Dr. Cagle. She has put a lot, you've heard the presentation tonight related to the work on career connections, our Engaged in Program, mock interviews, all of these things. And I can't say enough positive about the, the work that she's done in that area with the support of our instructional program, with our community partners, et cetera. If you remember, three or four years ago, we went to an E3 meeting at a restaurant and sat with local business owners, and that's where this thing started. So it's nice to see three years later how far we've come. What Ms. Skinner is going to share with you this evening is a, a very impressive application. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Skinner.
Thank you. And I echo your sentiments about the work that that team has done in the area of career awareness. The Virginia School Board Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award seeks to recognize Virginia school divisions who have achieved excellence through an innovative program or project with an emphasis on communication and collaboration within the business community, or student engagement within the business community, or student entrepreneurial activities. For this award, we have selected to highlight our Engaged in YCSD database. This program began, as Dr. Shandor just shared, as an idea posed by the Superintendent's Business Advisory Council in 2019 as a way to coordinate school-based career readiness activities with community partners. Since its launch, the database has grown to include over two-hundred-and-forty businesses, industry, and community partners. The data, the database supports the division's career awareness, exploration, and preparation efforts by having a ready pool of local professionals who are excited to share their expertise with our students. Some of these activities have included, as we shared with you earlier, mock interviews, guest speakers, career panels, field trips, and career days. The application that you'll approve this evening can be found in board docs. It includes a program description, details on how the program has helped to prepare our students to be workforce-ready, and information on how the school board community, excuse me, school board, community, and business partners have helped support the creation and growth of the program. As part of the application process, the Virginia School Board Association does require that you approve the application.
Are there any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment because I was actually on the board when this vision started. And I actually talked to a community member, a business owner, that was really excited to see this take off and to see it grow what it's grown into now. Even just last year, it was phenomenal. It just keeps getting better. So great program, but thank you. And with that, there's no other questions or comments. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this consideration of approval of the nomination for submission, Virginia School Boards Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award.
And I'll second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second to approve the nomination submission for the School Boards Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. You may pull the board.
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award. You may cast your votes. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner.
Next, we have a consideration of a motion to authorize the division superintendent to sell surplus vehicles at public auction or by other appropriate means when necessary. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Dr. Carroll, our Chief Operations, Chief Operations Officer, will now share some information related to this item.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, FALC DY authorizes the superintendent to sell property for which the school division no longer has a need. And occasionally, we accumulate excess old defective or nonusable vehicles. Staff comes to you tonight to ask approval to sell the vehicle listed on the attachment that you'll find. It's not an exhaustive list. It's just one item. We have a cargo van, a 2006, so it's fifteen years old. I did want to let you know that it has eighty-nine thousand miles on it, and the condition is poor, and I want to explain that one, that one note. We didn't run it into poor. We have, though, used it for parts. So it is not an operational vehicle. Therefore, we, we ask for your approval and disposing of this item.
Are there any further questions? All right. We are in need of a motion and a second to authorize the division superintendent to sell surplus vehicles at public auction or by other appropriate means when necessary.
I move that we authorize the division superintendent to sell surplus vehicles at public auction or public auction or by other appropriate means when necessary.
And a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second?
Yes, a motion's made by Mrs. Garaltson, seconded by Mr. Schaefer, for the superintendent to sell surplus vehicles at auction. You may cast your votes. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now in need of a closed session to discuss personnel matters. Could a board member please make a motion to take us into our closed session?
Absolutely. I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to specific employees pursuant to the personnel exemption at section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion's made by Mrs. Garaltson, seconded by Mr. Richardson, for the school board to meet in closed sessions, and you may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. The board is now in closed session. Thank you.
Our next special meeting will be held at 12:00 PM on Monday, June 14th, at York High School's Kiva. Please have a great evening, and we are now in closed session.